Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the April 28th, 2014 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Rabbi David Kay. Rabbi Kay has served congregation Ohav Shalom in Orlando and now in Mactlin since 2004. Founded in 1918, Ohav Shalom is Orlando's original and oldest synagogue. From 1926 to 1974, the synagogue was located at Church in Eola, providing the inspiration for the name of "The Sanctuary Downtown," which now stands on the same site. Ohav Shalom has been an active partner in the community, including monthly work at the Coalition for the Homeless and weekly medical and support staffing for Shepherd's Hope. Rabbi Kay is a member of the Mayor's Council of Clergy and the Executive Committee of the Interfaith Council of Central Florida. The invocation will be followed by the pledge led today by District War Commissioner Patty Sheehan. Would you all please join me in standing?
Makorah Chaim, source of all life. Today, as those chosen by their communities to serve in their name gather to fulfill their obligations, we are mindful that this day has also been set aside to recall both the horror and the heroism of the Holocaust. As we observe Holocaust Remembrance Day, we reflect on how readily the profound honor of being called to leadership can be tainted by personal ambition. We therefore ask for the strength to resist the siren call of ego and the humility to recognize the true nature of the responsibility entrusted to us. All those who have come before us have laid upon us their legacy. May we always choose to act and speak in ways which show the full and proper respect for their sacrifices and hard work, the fruits of which we enjoy today. May we use the gifts of our intellect well, sharing it as a blessing by utilizing it to its maximum potential for the good of all. Grant these who serve our community clarity and vision, courage and conviction, and compassion in thought and deed. Support them in their integrity and teach them and us that there is equal honor in the admission of error and the acknowledgement of truth. May each of us, in all that we do, reflect the best of our nature and the best of the common source of all of our being. Be amen to Kenya Hiraazon. May this come to be in our day. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Rabbi. Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you call the roll and make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business will be to take up the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council meetings of April the 14th. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. We'll move right into awards, presentations, and recognitions. Chief Mina, could you come do the honors, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It is my great honor to stand before you and help recognize Sergeant Pat Gukian of the Orlando Police Department. Why don't you come on down here? Sergeant Gukian has been a member of the Orlando Police Department since 1997. He's served in patrol, the neighborhood patrol unit, internal affairs, the undercover vice unit, and he's currently assigned to the Metropolitan Bureau of Investigation. Just recently, the Florida chapter of the National Association of Social Workers has awarded Pat the Public Citizen of the Year Award for his work with victims of human trafficking. Over the past few years, Pat has quickly become one of the state's leading experts in human trafficking issues. He has conducted over 100 training presentations to law enforcement, government entities, schools, churches, and has even met with state representatives on the subject of human trafficking. He is also the chairman of the Law Enforcement Committee for our Greater Orlando Human Trafficking Task Force, and he is a key presenter in the community. Under his leadership at the Metropolitan Bureau of Investigation, they have conducted over 80 investigations into human trafficking and have made over 25 arrests. In fact, MBI has the first conviction in the state of Florida under the new human trafficking statute. But more importantly, 11 women and children have been rescued from active human trafficking organizations, and Pat Gukian has helped provide victim services to over 70 victims of human trafficking. So please join me in congratulating Pat Gukian for receiving the Public Citizen of the Year Award.
Okay, would everybody place their pineapple in front of them? Commissioner Stewart, could you get mine as well, please? All right, everybody that's not in the tourism industry is thinking, what are they doing? So I'm going to call on Brooke Bonnet, who is our Director of Economic Development, to present an overview for National Travel and Tourism Week. Brooke?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the pineapple is the worldwide symbol of hospitality, so it is perfect that you have that in front of you today. Tourism is the backbone of Orlando's economy, and so much of what this community has become has grown out of our tourism sector. And today, we have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our tourism industry and partners. National Travel and Tourism Week has been celebrated during the first full week of May each year since 1984. International business and leisure travel is vital to our nation's economy and social well-being, and this coming week, our community will celebrate our local partners who make Orlando the top travel and tourism destination in the United States and one of the top in the world. Today, joining us, we have our partners with Visit Orlando and the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association. Visit Orlando is the official tourism association for Orlando and the surrounding communities and markets our area globally as a premier leisure convention and business destination. And we are happy to have with us today Visit Orlando's CFO and COO Larry Henrichs, as well as Brian Martin and Kristin Rothbauer. Also with us today are representatives from the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association, which is dedicated to the hospitality industry in Central Florida and represents more than 80% of the 117,500 hotel rooms in our region. With us today, representing CFHLA, are David Friedrich, General Manager for the Grand Bohemian Hotel right across the street, as well as Kevin Craig, who is the Public Policy Coordinator for CFHLA. And together, Visit Orlando and CFHLA support an industry that attracted 59 million visitors to our region last year and is responsible for more than $50 billion in local economic activity. At this time, I'd like to ask the mayor to present the proclamation on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Brooke. Proclamation, City of Orlando. Whereas travel has had a positive effect on Florida and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, to business productivity and to individual travelers' well-being, and whereas Visit Orlando is the official tourism association, helping to market and brand the destination globally with representation in more than a dozen countries, and whereas Orlando continues to be the number-one destination in the United States with more than 59 million visitors annually, and whereas to travel to and within Orlando provides significant economic benefits for the Central Florida region, and whereas tourism is one of Central Florida's largest industries, supporting 380,000 jobs in 2013, and whereas the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association is the world's largest regional lodging association and represents approximately 80% of all hotel rooms in Central Florida, and whereas international travel to Orlando continues to grow, contributing more than $5 billion in sales to the economy, and whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken to Orlando, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim May 3rd through the 11th, 2014, as Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Orlando. All right, that will bring us right to the mayor's update, and I have just a few items. I'm proud to announce that our hometown hockey team, the Orlando Solar Bears, beat the Cincinnati Cyclones Saturday and have made up a three-game deficit to be down 3 to 2 with two home games left, and the Game 6 will be at the Amway Center at 7:00 PM on Tuesday in the Eastern Conference Kelly Cup Quarterfinals. So I would encourage everybody tomorrow to dress in purple and support the Solar Bears. For more than two decades, our region has worked together to bring a passenger rail system to Central Florida, and that vision will come to fruition this week. On Wednesday, April 30th, we will have the grand opening of the 31-mile, 12-station first phase of Sun Rail, and we invite our entire community to come out and celebrate. The main grand opening event will be at Sand Lake Road, beginning at 11 o'clock, but we are going to have a little bit of fun with this, and the Sun Rail train will start up in Sanford, and we'll have local elected officials getting onboard at stations down the course of the line. So at about 9:45, I will join Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Ortiz to welcome the train at the Florida Hospital Health Village Station. At about 10:15, Commissioner Lyman and Commissioner Gray will open the Link Central Station. At 10:10, roughly, Commissioner Ings will join the train at Church Street Station, and then at 10:40, Commissioner Sheehan will welcome the train to Orlando Health. So I want to remind everybody that fare operation begins on May 1st, but for the first couple of weeks, from May 1st through May 16th, the service will be free, so everybody can have an opportunity to ride it and get accustomed to riding it, or just go see what it's all about and do it for free, and there is a full schedule at sunrail.com. And a couple of things on the consent agenda today that I want to mention is a funding agreement for Best Foot Forward, our initiative that we've been working on for pedestrian safety. We continue to embrace alternative means of transportation, and it's important to support programs of this type as we continue to stress the importance of pedestrian safety in our community. We launched this program in 2012, and we have seen great results. Nearly 1,700 drivers have been issued warnings for failing to yield to a pedestrian. OPD has cited almost 411 drivers with tickets, but most importantly are not the tickets, but the compliance rate, which has gone up from 9% at the start to an average of 48% throughout the city. So that is marked improvement. On today's agenda also are two other items. One is a QTI for AMTEC Diagnostics in the City of Orlando. They provide veterinary diagnostic testing services, and they will be creating 45 new high-value, high-wage jobs in Orlando. And then I think the one that most of the people, if I can just guess, yeah, that's it, there's young people out there, and they're all smiling and happy, and they look athletic and coordinated, unlike most of us up here. So on today's agenda is a proposed lease agreement with the Orlando Ballet at Lockhaven Community Center, and at that location, we're creating a win-win opportunity for the city, for the ballet, and for our entire community. We have a world-class ballet, we have a world-class ballet school, and through an unfortunate series of circumstances, they've kind of found themselves homeless, or at least in temporary digs, so the ballet will preserve the existing building, which many of you, especially I guess Commissioner Stewart, probably grew up going to community and high school dances in. They're going to enhance the building with a substantial renovation. They plan to further invest in a new building right beside it, which will house the ballet school, and it'll be a permanent home for non-touring residential and a very cultural asset. It's partnerships like these that really help to grow the arts and cultural scene. I want to thank Commissioner Stewart for his involvement and leadership in this issue, and I would like to recognize all of those that are here in support of this particular issue, if you would stand and be recognized. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council, and we give... Could we have this little one just stand up again? She's so cute. It would be hard to vote against her, that's for sure. Okay. Consent agenda is a number of items that are voted on through a single vote of the council, and Commissioner Lyman asked that Item B1 be moved to new business, and we have done that at Agenda Review without objections, so we will take up the remainder of the consent agenda. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and also to update you on things going on in their districts, and we rotate the order that we start that. So today, we're going to begin with Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I certainly support Item B1, which is the ballet lease. Arts are a very important asset in Orlando, and the dancers brought a lot of great energy to the Ivanhoe area. I actually walked by the old facility every single day to see the dancers coming and going, and it was just, it brought wonderful energy to the area, and it will bring wonderful energy to Lockhaven as well. Arts organizations do deserve governmental support, and we lost our symphony and our opera, and we need to support this organization. I recently got to see Procafio's Romeo and Juliet, and I have to tell you, the ballroom scene is one of my favorite things in the whole wide world, really. I mean, that music is amazing in the ballroom scene. I have to tell you, Robert Hill, that was the most amazing choreography I've ever seen. I have to tell you, it was beyond. And I don't think people really understand what a gym we really have here unless they go to a ballet performance, so please, if you have not gone, you need to go because we really have one of the, I think, one of the best companies in the world. I really do here, and it's amazing. Again, this lease is a creative solution for an underutilized facility. This is the right thing for us to do, and it will actually allow community groups to use this more efficiently, and I just think this is a wonderful thing, so I'm delighted to support this today, and I think you're going to have lots of support, I hope, from my colleagues, but again, this is just a very creative solution. And while I'm very disappointed that you're no longer in the Dr. Phillips Center, I think you're really going to be able to use this new facility and really bring it up to be an amazing facility. On Item B5, the Budget Review Committee, finally, we're getting the pedestrian bridge at Millenia. Yay. It's now Commissioner Ings' area, but this is something that I started working on many, many years ago, and we're actually going to be naming that bridge after Kyle Coob, a planner who passed away, who did a lot of work on that, so delighted to be able to see that finally come to fruition. And I also fully support continuing Best Foot Forward. As someone who utilizes our Orlando Urban Trail every single morning, I've gotten nearly wiped out several times, so I'm glad to see the enforcement out there because I've seen a lot more compliance with the pedestrian crossings since we've done this initiative, and I think it's important for us to continue doing that. So that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move on to District 5. Commissioner Lyman.
Thank you, Mayor.
I checked, Commissioner Lyman, this is in fact your second-to-last meeting.
I know. May 12th, May something, whenever it is.
We only have one meeting in May.
Yes, right, instead of two. That's great, I can just take up the rest of the time today.
You can have Commissioner Ings' time today.
That's the one thing, well, never mind. Let me just take my few moments, number one, to congratulate, of course, our ballet for being here. I think I've told everyone my story, Mayor. I was from a very poor family, and one way I got to go to college is I was a writer. Everybody thought I should go and major in English, but I used to write little plays and produce them in high school and whatnot, and a great reader. So part of your success comes from the arts. I was also first clarinet in the band, and one thing my dad did for us as a poor family, he bought me a clarinet. When I finished college, there was no way I was going to tell him I had lost that clarinet, but because that was big money during that time. But I just want to congratulate them, they got my vote for the arts anyway, and Mayor, most people don't know, I have a date with a commissioner up here. For ballet! That's my date. Eat your heart out, girls! I'm going to have Jimmy for a night. So y'all better do something good because this is his one chance to go see ballet. And the date was made a long time ago, a long, long time ago, so that's great. But I have to reflect just a little bit on Sun Rail. Mayor Dyer is talking about it. I've had the great honor since 1999, serving on Metro Plan, and that's our Regional Transportation Board. So everything, transportation, trails, and whatever else, has gone through Metro Plan since 1999, and doing great things there. Losing out on light rail, but I've had a chance to ride light rail in all the cities where our money went to. Seattle, Charlotte, I mean, we just messed that one up royally. But Sun Rail was a thought many years ago, I think it started with Bob Sinler up in Apopka. But I'm very, very happy to have been chairperson, thanks to Mayor Dyer of Metro Plan. We did some great things. Best Foot Forward, I don't see any, but I don't know that anyone is here, we don't have to have them here, to do the great things we do regarding transportation. We are a major, an integral part of what we do in terms of transportation. So all these years, 15 years, I've served with the greatest elected officials and appointed officials regarding transportation in Florida, and this is a great thing. I feel like Joe Biden. This is a big deal. Okay, you got it. Now on to agenda, we've got B1, B8. I just want to say to everyone, and especially the bank, a real thank you. Reclaiming this property is good for the development in Orlando and Paramore. Mayor Dyer and I had a little deal way back on pathways to Paramore, what we wanted to see there, and one of the things to help Paramore Village was a park. It just wasn't anything else you can do over there, but it was a beautiful park, and to help my predecessor, Nat Ford, who hated that checkerboard park, to call it Zia Raleigh Park, we renamed it Zia Raleigh. And it's a beautiful park, and this development that is coming down the pike will be great for Paramore, great for this community. I know the city council will do the right thing. And I tell you, I started working on Paramore Village in 1988. Sam Ings, Commissioner Ings, was there in '89, I believe, became an assistant chair, and to 1998, when I was elected, then Lila Allen, we all got together, we purchased those units, not one was over 500 square feet, I think it was. They were very small units, and some people raised six children in those little tiny spaces. We relocated the families there, and now we have an opportunity to do, to move forward. And I want to say thank you to Lori, thank you to CRA Ohio, are we going to do this? Thanks to Mr. Hanton, who gave it a gallant effort. It just wasn't in the cards, but Mayor, this council has a great opportunity to fulfill that vision we had for that property years ago. I mean, think about McFaul, that we had done over in Paramore, all the years we put into Valerie Monday, getting this piece of property ready, developing McFaul, getting all our prefab homes in on Paramore and McFaul. I'm just very, very proud to leave us in this particular situation today and vote for B8. This is a big, another big deal. Now for, we've already pulled C1, we'll talk about that later. On C7, that is huge. I talked to Deborah Girard a little bit earlier. This is six homes, the realtors and Deborah and Lori all got together. It's an infill project where literally these veterans will be given the houses mortgage-free. There are going to be some conditions, but this is a great way to have infill up in the Paramore area that has had a little bat influences, and to build it up, and I'm so proud of that project. But I know in November, we went to Seattle, met with White House staff regarding what we can do across the country for veterans, and this is just a small part of where we are going, I believe, for the future, in developing properties and housing for veterans, disabled veterans, whatever, that we need to honor them more largely, and I'm just excited as can be about this. So with that in mind, Mayor, I will wait for C1 to go into new business. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 6. Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I'd like to say congratulations to Sergeant Patrick Gukian. Sergeant Patrick Gukian and I worked together too at the Orlando Police Department, and Pat, I want to say you look much different today, but it's a good look, it's a very good look, and it's a prosperous look as well, so thank you for being the 2014 Public Citizen of the Year, and so that's a great honor, and you've done some great things throughout your career, so please continue to do that. And then also B1, the Orlando Ballet. Thank you, guys, especially Lori Botts, you know, for jumping in there and really hearing the people, and I don't know how the idea came out, but it was certainly a divine idea, and you guys jumped on it, and we're making more history in Orlando because this is a total community project where we all benefit, and this is a perfect way to support our youth, who we see our youth here, and also a perfect way for us to invest in the future of the Orlando Ballet and to let you know, Orlando Ballet, that we do care about you and that we do love you. And then Item B8 on the agenda, the Paramore Village area. This is a great opportunity for us too. Some great vision has gone into this project as well, Mayor and council, and thank you, Commissioner Lyman, for your leadership in that area, and you've always been that forward thinker for Paramore, and you've made some great strides in that area, and even when the one project didn't work, then that don't mean that we stop there. We find other ways, so thank you again for your leadership in that. And I'd also like to say congratulations to the Orange County branch of the NAACP. They had their, what was it, 58... They had their, what was it, 58th Annual Freedom Fund and Awards Banquet this Saturday on April 19th at the Rosen Center. Cran Riley is the president of the NAACP for Orange County Branch. Their theme was One Nation, One Dream, remembering the Civil Rights Act of 1964 50 years later. And so that's a great honor. I want to thank Walter Hawkins for his efforts in working with the local branch of the NAACP as well as Reginald McGill. And then on Thursday, April the 24th, I attended the Ninth Annual John Young History Maker Celebration, where Chief Judge Belvin Perry was being honored, the chief judge for Florida's Ninth Judicial Circuit, as the John Young History Maker for the present, and William C. Bill Coleman, former Orange County Republican Representative of the Florida State Legislature. And he is the John Young History Maker of the Past. And the great thing about both of these guys, they gave a lot to our community, wherein William Coleman is now deceased, but he had a distinguished career that included his service in World War II. And Chief Judge Belvin Perry, being the son of the, one of the two first African-American police officers that were hired by the City of Orlando in 1951, Belvin Perry Senior. And I had an opportunity to serve on the police department with his dad, Belvin Perry Senior, and also worked with Judge Perry when he was an assistant state attorney with Bob Egan, who was the state attorney at that time. And so we worked on cases together, and he was a great prosecutor then and obviously a great judge now. And then also Jackie Brockington of News 13, she was the masters of ceremonies of that event. Reverend Nelson Pender was on hand, Chief Wilson was there as well. So Judge Perry had lots of community support there. Sarah Van Arndt Bell, thank you very much. She is the executive director for the History Center for all of her great work in putting this together. And thank you, Kyle Shepherd, the Assistant City Attorney, for your support and help in this event as well. Orange County Commissioner Pete Clark was on hand to stand in for Mayor Teresa Jacobs, and I was on hand to stand in for you, Mayor Dyer. Commissioner Sheen, as well as Commissioner Stewart, were also on hand for this event. So the City of Orlando was very well represented there. And we had two seniors, one from Boone High School, Amelia Cheatham, and the other from Jones High School, Regina Windham. They were both the future award winners, and they are also recipients of the Scott Harris Memorial Scholarship Award. So this was a great event that was held at the Alphonde in Winter Park, and this was, again, their ninth annual event. On this past Saturday, Lisa Early, the director with the Family Parks and Recreation, along with Brenda March and Rodney Williams and other members of FPR, stepped up with the Orlando Blackmail Youth Summit, and they're working with the National League of Cities in the Blackmail Achievement Program and reaching out to see what we can do to help enhance the young blackmills within our community. Also, Orlando Police Chief John Mina was on hand to greet the youth, and this was a very good event. Had a nice crowd to start out, and it was good to see the young men just really taking a part of their own community and really stepping up to the mic and telling of the things that they would like to see in our community. So again, congratulations on that event. And we also have a new doctor's office in Washington Shores, right there off of Bruton Boulevard, across from the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and it's entitled Your Place Health Systems at 2132 Bruton Boulevard. Dr. Cydel Legrand from Tampa, Florida, is moving her operation to Orlando, and so she had her open house and welcome. So many people from the community was there to receive some health advice and also some diabetic screenings, as well as exercise demonstrations, HIV testing, blood pressure screening, and cholesterol screening. So this was a great event. The last thing I have, Mayor, is the memorial service that was held for Linda Davidson. Linda Davidson was obviously an employee here with the City of Orlando. She loved you. And you can tell by her testimony and the pictures that they showed of you all together. This was a great event. Linda had a daughter to also be present there at this event. Marcia Goodwin and Frank Billingsley and Elena Brenner, they did a great job in representing the City of Orlando. Everybody had different stories to tell, and they were all great, and they were all genuine. Reginald McGill, Thomas Chapman was also there to tell his story as well. So this was a life that was truly hard to see go, and it was obviously all of a sudden. But Linda, Lynn Davidson, thank you for your presence here in the City of Orlando, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District one. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce everybody to a guest with me, Adam Stalwart. Adam, would you stand up? You got to do it, my friend. Thank you. Adam is a senior at Bishop Moore. He's got about 11 days until graduation and decided he wanted to know a little bit more about how city government runs. So he took the initiative to call and ask if he could come down for a day and see how City Hall operates. So Adam is going to the University of Florida. We wish you luck.
All right.
And I would say to everybody else, if you want to know, we would love to host you. I'm sure anybody on the dais would love to host, anybody that would like to learn more about how city government works. So Adam, good luck to you. Thanks for coming. A couple of things on the agenda I want to talk about. I'll go in reverse order, and I'll duck Wes the pineapple. Come here in a minute. C nine, I wanted to follow up on what the mayor said, the QTI Award for Antech Diagnostics. I've said before, I'll say again, any company that invests their capital in our city, I think it's perfectly appropriate, and I'm glad to support helping that cause. And so we hope, as they consider Orlando, that we'll see them here on a more permanent basis. So glad to participate in that. And now the big issue, B one. If rumor hasn't told you, I am struggling with B one. I want to also echo what the mayor said, as I look at the young people. I recognize you're talented professionals, and I wish you nothing but the best. And this has nothing to do, my position has nothing to do with your skill set. Unfortunately, in everything, there's a piece in there called economics, and that's the part I'm struggling with in this transaction. I went through it at length this morning. I don't think we need to rehash that. I've met with your leadership. You're in good hands. I'm sure they're close to what they want to accomplish, but at this stage, I just can't support it from a financial standpoint. So with that, I'm going to vote no on item B one, but wish everybody the best, and I'm confident it'll work out to the best for everybody. So with that, Mayor, I am done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, you like ballet? You like the ballet, Orlando Ballet? I just want to make sure. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to Pat Gukian, Sergeant Pat Gukian. We have our own serpico now. Looking good.
Don't tell me.
For those of you who have missed it, both Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Ings are former Orlando police officers.
On item B one, I believe we have the future of our arts right here, and we have the future of our culture. And we have to start planning now, so we'll see results coming through the years to come. So that particular community over there is gaining a great asset, a valuable gem, so congratulations. I wish you the best. I know we're going to pull through. On item C eight, I want to congratulate Sito Sushi Celebration on their Business Assistant Program Agreement. It's going to be located at 5449 Gateway Village Center, District two. So welcome to them, as Commissioner Gray was talking about, is, you know, brings value to our community, brings jobs, and great taste also. So congratulations. On A two, I support the resolution in support of the All-Aboard Florida Passenger Rail Services as another asset to our community, as another, we're in time. Our transportation system, I think, is going to be great for our central Florida region, bringing more visitors to this area. And back to the community, on April 16th, we celebrated the 10th anniversary of the City of Orlando All-A Office. I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Alicia Ramirez and staff for their hard work and dedication to the residents of Orlando. I call this office not only, it's not the Hispanic Office for Local Assistance, it's a home office for local assistance because they don't only help Hispanics, they help everybody. So congratulations on everything you guys are doing over there. On April 19th, I attended Mr. Tom Galais' Neighborhood Watch Street Training at the Englewood Park Neighborhood. I'd like to thank the following Orlando firefighter staff who attended the event, Lieutenant Mike Stalling, Engineer Scott Hammond, firefighter Mike McGurk, I was the main CPR presenter, firefighter Matthew Hereford, and District Chief Anibal Zize. Great job. We had a great time over there. And for those of you who have never been in a ladder, it is one scary thing to be in. You could see at the top of the roofs, they brought us up to, what is it, about 90 feet or so, and I was holding on to that little box for my life. And I thought, you know, I was in the Orlando Police Department SWAT team and all those things, we used to rappel and whatnot. I think I'm losing it. I'm losing my touch. So anyhow, last Saturday, at the Villas of Costles Soul Neighborhood, I had the pleasure and honor of seeing our community work hands-on, along with Mr. Wayne Zimmerman and volunteers from OUC. Residents directed by Ms. Adolfin Ortiz, who is the president of their neighborhood association, and Davies Trees, planting trees and cleaning the neighborhood. It was a great experience, everybody working together, seeing how government and community and business partners can work together. That's what government is really about. So we need to promote this kind of activities. And on top of that, making our districts and our city even more green. So thank you, everyone, for being so involved. That was a great experience. Also on Saturday, at the Dover Shores Community Center, we had art classes for senior citizens by artist Ms. Sina Soder. Approximately 25 seniors took advantage of this class. It teaches them how to relax while doing art. So once again, our community getting involved in different aspects, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And finally, District three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me cover a couple of quick things. Lake Orlando Homeowners Association had a great event this past weekend to green up over in Lake Orlando area. Let me say a special thank you to our staff, Jan Ray Hill and Jody Bias, and the leadership over there, Kathy Nobles. We appreciate the work that they have done. We had another successful event at Lew Gardens. Let me just kind of say, I'm so proud of what Robert Bowden is doing over there. We had more than 1,500 people in the Jazz and Blues Stroll this past weekend. They got a new exposure to Lew Gardens, and we just got the total back on the plant sale, had more than 11,000 people come through the plant sale in just two days. So it's really kind of neat to see that and to see the momentum that's continuing to build there. In addition to that, we just got featured in the plant section, I guess you want to call it that, in Miami Herald. The Orlando Lew Gardens, along with Mead Gardens, were the two places that people were told to go see when they came to Orlando, Florida. So that was kind of a neat little affirmation of what we're doing. My congratulations to Robert Bowden and all of his staff for the work that they do. Here are a couple of things that are coming up. I'm honored to be part of the presentation and dedication of Miriam's Garden tomorrow evening over at the Orlando Museum of Art. Councilman Amy will remember Miriam Kersey, Jim Kersey's wife. She was an amazing individual, committed to arts and our community. They have honored her by raising money and creating a special art garden over at Omart, and that will be there, get a chance to dedicate that tomorrow evening in her memory. Some of y'all may remember Miriam from years past. She was one of the key people that was involved in the redirection of Edgewater Drive from where it was to where it currently is, and the naming of the tree called the Mayor, which is named after Mayor Bill Frederick. So it's a great legacy she has left us in terms of both art and in terms of horticulture. Ivanhoe Village After Hours will be having their event this week at the new Junior League Bargain Box over at Orange Avenue from 6:00 to 8:00. Come out and see what that community is all about. Faith Arts Village is having their first Friday's art exhibition again. It'll be coming up this Friday. And then, of course, Lew Gardens is having their movie night this week, this next Friday on Streetcar Named Desire. And coming up on May 10th is the College Park Dancing on Drive. Let me also say, on B seven today, we have selected a contractor at risk, I guess would be the term, of garne construction to work on Mark Street Project. We're thrilled about that getting kind of moving forward, and now we're moving down that path and look for some more community meetings as we now begin to complete that task. Let me just read a quick statement I wrote in support of B one. I want to make sure I get all the facts and figures out there. All of y'all know that I'm in strong support of this. It's a good asset to our community, but let me just read this briefly. The Lock Haven Neighborhood Center building has been an integral part of our city's history since it was built in 1958. The ballet has also been important to our community since 1974, and through this partnership, the ballet will have a permanent home in our city and continue their mission, while the Lock Haven Center Building will be preserved and revitalized to its former glory. I used to attend dances back there in high school to show you how old I really am. With the ballet's contribution towards refurbishment, it will ensure that the community space remains functional to allow the building to continue to be used for many of the activities that occur there today, while also allowing the space to be rented out for weddings and other special events, like it's currently being done. This proposed location would complement the other arts and cultural amenities of Lock Haven, and the addition of the ballet, it further fortifies this area as a premier arts and sciences destination. Thank you, Commissioner Sheen. You're exactly on point with your comments. I'm excited about this partnership and having the ballet continue to make its home in the city and, of course, in District three. So I'm thrilled to be able to support that. Let me also cover a couple of quick points. I've had a chance to speak to the president of the ballet, and some of the issues that were raised this morning have already been addressed. They were addressed both individually and collectively in terms of its use, and so we continue to use that building for community service. And let me also say a special thanks to Frank and to Rebecca and to Byron. This process moved pretty quickly, but I think it moved in a way that supports not only the ballet, but also the community and protects us. And I want to say thank you to y'all for the work that you did to accomplish that task. This is a very innovative agreement, as we have in the past, allowing us the opportunity to see annual performance and be able to see, as the needs of the city continue to change, we'll be able to address those needs as future councils will be able to accomplish that task. That's pretty innovative, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate y'all and the work that you did, and of course, the leadership of the ballet. So with that, I wholeheartedly endorse that, and that's all that I have, Mayor.
So a motion to approve. For a second. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Congratulations, Orlando Ballet. We're going to take a one-minute informal recess for anybody that had an item on the consent agenda that doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Like the whole right half of the room.
You know, Mayor, I forgot to tell everyone, I have on my Budadier suit today. This is what the mayor looks like most days. Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, gosh, she's kinda heavy.
Thank you for coming, honey. Wait, wait, honey.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, we got some more. There we hit them.
Oh, look at our precious.
You sure cleared a room?
Sure did. Yeah, Commissioner Gray's car is the second one in.
Hey, mine's the one that always gets vandalized, y'all. I'm just saying.
With a short break, Mayor, let me-
I've gone through three tires already, people putting nails in them.
A short break, let me quickly announce, my brother Jacob had his second grandchild this morning at 11 o'clock, Leila. Up in Gainesville, so I wanted to be the first one to congratulate publicly, so I can blame it on my brother Jacob for-
Congratulations.
Take credit for it.
Okay, everybody ready to go?
Yep.
Let's move, let's, without objection, recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA. We have, let's see, a couple items which are meeting minutes. So, let's take up number one, which is approving the meeting minutes from the CRA meeting of March 31st, 2014. So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Second one is approving meeting minutes from the CRA meeting of April 14th.
So, move.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. All right, third item is approving the Wells Landing Acquisition and Funding Agreement. We've already done that on the city council consent agenda. Walter, did you have some comments that you wanted to make?
I was just gonna ask for the request that we would normally do, just requesting, just staff requesting approval of the Wells Landing Agreement between the City of Orlando and the Community Redevelopment Agent, subject to review and approval of the City Attorney's Office, authorizing for the Chairman and Executive Director to execute such agreement. Staff also request CRA acceptance of title to the Wells Landing property and authorization of expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Trust Fund in the amount not to exceed $30,000 for the amount of taxes and other closing costs related to Wells Landing project.
I absolutely move to accept it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. Discussion hearing done, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business come before the CRA, Walter?
No, sir. Thank you.
CRA will stand adjourned, will convene, without objection, the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting for the sole purpose of accepting the meeting minutes from the Advisory Council on April the night, 2014. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries, and we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting, and we will reconvene the city council meeting, we whip through these ordinances on first reading, then come back to new business after that. Madam Clerk, let's go to ordinances, first reading, number one.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, and comprised of 16.13 acres, more or less, as R3B on the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing done, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to sidewalk cafes, amending Section 54.28 Orlando City Code to adjust and clarify sidewalk clear zone and sidewalk furniture zone dimensional standards, and to provide exemptions from the general requirement of providing approved barriers separating the sidewalk clear zone from the approved sidewalk cafe area for certain eating and drinking establishments, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing done, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of East Mark Street, east of Lake Druid, south of Plaza Terrace Drive, and west of Woodcock Road, and comprised of 19.5 acres of land, more or less, as planned development district in part, and planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district in part, on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? I have two appearance cards. You'll have five minutes to testify. If you, when you come to the podium, you'll give your name and address. So, I have first Matthew Rinders and then Paul James.
My name's Matt Rinders. I live at 2508 Laura Place. Mayor and Commissioners, not opposing to the development in the area, just looking for a little more refinement in the ordinance as it regards to Lake Druid Park. We've met with the staff, gone through, got input into the ordinance, but it boils down to the Lake Druid Park property, which is the bike track, which Commissioner Sheehan has been very supportive and generous to develop that property. It relates to security access in home sweet homes, transients going through the park. We recommended that, you know, the park maintain its six-foot fence, and that the new development have a six-foot fence around it. And the only access they could have to the park or to the trail would be from their main gate. They go out on the trail and they enter the park at one point of access. This would be consistent with the CUP that was approved for Lake Druid Park. The ordinance is very vague on what they're allowed to do. They could have direct access from the apartments to the park. That would hinder police from a single point, you know, entrance and controlling the park. We have a lot of drugs and problems in the vacant property, and we look forward to the bike track kinda bringing people there and maybe pushing that somewhere else. All we're really looking for is the ordinance to define that there's no pedestrian or foot traffic allowed or bicycle from the new property onto Lake Druid Park direct or to the Katy Way Trail direct.
Okay, thank you. Paul James.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Paul James. I live at 2901 East Marks Street. I have a, I'm not opposed to the development of this area. There's a couple of items in the ordinance that I would like to address. The first, in the ordinance specifically on page 5, beginning right at line 180 in what you have, it addresses the dumpsters that are in the area. As it was presented at the Municipal Planning Board, the dumpster and compactor area would be roofed. That is not itemized here in the ordinance. These, the dumpsters and compactors are literally behind my house. They are behind 2901 and 2905 East Marks. We do have in the ordinance that they can only be emptied and removed between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. What we would like to do is have two additional things. The roof that was discussed during the Municipal Planning Board be added to the ordinance, and then also, so that, allow that the access to the dumpsters and the compactor be restricted to 6:00 AM to 8, or, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, so that we don't have people out there at midnight or 2:00 AM emptying it and setting off the compactor running right behind our homes in the middle of the night. The second item that I would like to address is on page 6, beginning at line 221. With the redesign of the layout of this apartment complex from the original Orlando Heights, the original design had two-story buildings on the north and south edges of the property. What we now have, because the Municipal Planning Board approved a variance to allow the buildings to go from 35 feet to 38 feet, is we now have three-story buildings on the south side and the north side of the properties. What we also have with the new layout is an increase in the number of units that it now actually look directly into the properties on Mark Street. We'll be able to look from the third floor into the properties on Mark Street, and then on the north side into the properties in the condo on the north side of the property. So, we were asking for some additional visual barriers be put in to the requirement so that, to add some privacy, address some privacy concerns for the residents on Mark Street, as well as the people who are living on the north side in the condos, just to prevent the third story from being able to see into our backyards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Former Commissioner Bill Bagley.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here as a real estate agent representing Orlando Heights LLC, the owners of the property who are selling the property, hopefully to a developer to implement this plan. The developer suggested that they would put a roof on the, on the compactor. We don't have a problem with adding that to the, to the ordinance. The, as for the hours of operation, Orlando is attempting to become a true 24-hour city. People work all different kinds of hours. We encourage multiple religions that honor separate days of the week as, as holy days that they observe. And therefore, I would suggest that if any restriction be placed on the use of the compactor, that is, 145 feet from the back doors, back walls of these houses, there is a 60-foot easement between the property and these houses, plus their 25-foot setback and the 30-foot separation between the compactor and the property line. That's a total of 145 feet. I would suggest that any restriction be incoordinated with our existing noise ordinance. I believe those hours are 10:00 to 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but I'm sure legal staff can verify those hours. As for the height, the height has been increased from 35 feet to 38 feet. Again, there's 100, there's, actually, there's an additional 30 feet, making it 175 feet, between the apartments and these residences on the north side. It's not that much, but the Audubon condominiums have no windows facing this property. All those buildings are designed with no windows facing the south side of the property. Other than that, we're supportive of the recommendation. I'd like to thank the city staff, particularly James Burnett, Kyle Shepard, Mark Checkman, Dean Grandin, in the work they've done to get this to this point. On a separate matter, I would like to congratulate you folks for the work that's done in Sunrail. I started working on, that's the first public service work I did in 1989 on a task force, to look at I-4 and what we could do to eliminate the auto-dependent transportation in our community. So, congratulations on the grand opening Thursday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a question for Commissioner Bagley. I'm trying to understand that first 145 feet separation. And I'm looking at a map now, so effectively, the back, the setbacks from the houses to their own property line gives that part of that 145?
Yes.
And then the balance-
This is 25 feet, then 60 feet of the OUC easement that the bike path is in, and then an additional 30 feet before you get to the south edge of the compactor.
Okay. And, but you're okay with restricting the operation of the compactor to the times of the day? That would be-
That would, that would be acceptable. I realize that, you know, we have people who work and don't get home until 2:00 in the morning. We don't wanna encourage them to empty their trash and take their beer bottles out and operate the compactor while Mr. James is attempting to sleep. You know, that's, that's reasonable. But, but this ordinance will be in effect virtually in perpetuity. And, and, you know, we've got to not only look at how we're affecting the people who take the time to come here and address the board, but what about the 100 residents that are gonna live in this property 10, 15, 20, 25, 50 years from now? And that's part of what we as public officials have to take into consideration when we make these kinds of decisions.
I agree, but I think that history has proven that people are still gonna sleep at night. Just wanna let you know, Bill. Just teasing, Bill, just having some fun with you. All right, thank you. I was gonna make sure.
Commissioner Sheehan, who represents the district?
Yeah, you know, and we've had many meetings on this property, and this is actually, you know, we've had several public meetings and some concerns about access and different things like that. I think that the, I think that the restrictions address the access fine. I don't think it's gonna be as much of an issue. But I, as someone who has, lives next door to commercial property, I certainly understand, you know, 'cause I've had issues with the city people dumping the trash at 3:00 in the morning and waking me up, you know. And, and we've actually had to make it clear in our ordinances and had stickers put on the dumpsters not to dump it before 7:00 AM, because they were just going out so early, it was ridiculous. And I mean, I was getting blasted out of bed, so I mean, I understand. That's a legitimate concern. And again, infill development only works if you are, you know, good to your neighbors. So, I think that if we were able just to add a couple of things today, that the roof, especially since the developer doesn't have a problem with that, that we add two stipulations. The roof on the compactor and the hours of the operation of the compactor be consistent with city ordinance, which is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and nighttime probably isn't gonna be the issue as much as the morning. So, if we can go ahead and add those two, you know, things onto that, I will make a motion to, to approve the, to the item.
We need to make a motion for the-
Let's see, the motion-
Your motion's not been made.
The motion is made on the ordinance itself, so if you wanna motion to amend it, that would be in order.
Okay, motion to amend.
Hang on a second.
Motion, okay, so the motion relates to the roof and the hours of operation-
Correct.
On the compactor.
Yes.
Kyle or somebody down there kinda captured, Dean, captured the essence of that?
He said yes. It's pretty simple.
I can't see you guys. You shaking your heads? Okay. And then, I think, hey, Kyle or Dean, could you come up here just real quick? I'm not as completely conversant, so I didn't completely follow the access issue on Lake Druid Park.
Well, as it stands right now, Mayor, the applicant's proposing to put a fence around the development itself. There would not be a fence around Lake Druid Park. We made it clear that there should not be vehicular access to the park, but we thought that the residents in this complex had the right to gain access to that park directly and not have to go through the main gate, which would allow, it would require them to circulate around the entire perimeter of the property to get to the park. And we thought that as long as there was a gate that was pedestrian-only, that would be activated with a card or a lock, that it was appropriate.
Okay, so it's access from the apartment complex?
To the park, not, yeah. Anybody who's in the park cannot gain access through the development to the other side of the development.
Okay.
I just have one other question, though, Dean. Is there a way to restrict access when the park is closed?
Uh, no, because the trail is still open. You mean in terms of access from the development into the park after evening hours? That's a question for the developer. I suppose you could have some kind of locking system that would not allow you to access the park after certain hours, even from the development.
I mean, that's a legitimate concern. To have access to the park after the park is closed at night, I, you know, we don't- You know, we don't, if we're going to allow them access, they should have to have some way to restrict, you know, the comings and going when our park hours are closed. I mean, I don't think that's appropriate.
90% of the parks in the city don't have perimeter fences.
Right. I guess this is true for all parks in the city. We don't, you know, we have, we basically say sunrise to sunset, and after that, parks are technically closed. Lake Druid Park is no different.
But we don't allow also to have a private gate accessing it either. I mean, this is kind of a special situation.
Well, again, we're not requiring there to be a gate. The developer is proposing to put a fence or gate. We normally allow for developments to go right adjacent to a park without any gates or fences at all. So in this case, we particularly have a situation where the developer is proposing a fence, where a fence does not exist today, that would then essentially separate the park from the private property.
There is a fence there.
Well, I think there's a, yeah, there is a fence.
There is currently a fence there.
But they're not required under code to have a fence unless you felt that that was a requirement of this PD application. They're proposing to put a fence and a gate.
I have, I do have concerns of people getting in the park at night. I do think that's an appropriate concern for the neighborhood.
Well, I don't think it would be that difficult to control that gate so that the gate actually automatically locks and cannot be opened by anybody, including residents, after a certain hour.
Let's do this. Let's vote on the motion related to the compactor, since we have consensus on that. Is a further discussion on Commissioner Sheehan's motion. You're not on the compactor, Commissioner Lyneum, are you?
Well, it was about the compactor, but I was going to just say to them that our Sonic Way's will pick up those compactors 2:00 in the morning. We had to stop them over in the Rock Lake area, 2:30. I guess they're moving very fast, so it is an issue. So when he brought it up, I like those hours, but when we're done with the vote, I want to address Bill.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, that motion to amend carries. Commissioner Lyneum?
Mayor and council, first of all, I have to tell you, I've worked many years with Bill Bagley on the municipal planning board. He was one of the best planning boards I've ever known of since we left. Which, you know, they're still a good board. And here on city council, and I want to say hello to my old friend. He was the smartest commissioner I've ever worked with in the city of Orlando, just brilliantly concerned about his constituents and about municipal governance, and I've missed that part of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to ask Commissioner Sheehan to work with staff related to the other issue from now and now and the next time, second reading on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I did speak to Commissioner Bagley, and he said that we could put a time lock on that gate so that after a certain hour, you would not be able to access that gate or the park.
Okay, that would be fine.
So that would probably solve that issue.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion on the ordinance as amended indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, that brings us back to new business item B1. Commissioner Lyneum asked that that agenda item be pulled for consideration during new business at the agenda review meeting. Kyle, explain to us what that item, or how that item is before us procedurally. Why don't you just, Kyle, take about 30 seconds and do that again? You can actually take more than 30.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor. Sorry, Commissioner Bill Bagley was just talking to me, so I think what you told me to do was to come up and explain the posture of item C1.
B1.
B1. C1.
Is it C1?
Economic Development.
I'll tell you about B1.
All right.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot. People are out slitting Commissioner Gray's tires right now.
I'm B1.
Move on to C1.
You seem to have it out the check on the car.
Thank you, Economic Development. It used to be B.
Economic Development, C1, the Historic Preservation Board minutes.
Okay, so before you is the Historic Preservation Board minutes from their meeting earlier this month in April, and there is, there's several recommended action items there. One is you need to accept the meeting minutes at the HPB meeting. Two, there's an application for certificate of appropriateness for a couple of properties along North Orange Avenue. The recommendation for that one is recommendation of approval of the certificate, so you need to take action on that one. And then the third one is the HPB heard a petition for the proposed landmarking of the Tinker Field complex. Now, the way our code works is that that petition from HPB, instead of coming directly to you, it first goes to the MPB, the Municipal Planning Board, for a recommendation first. So what you have before you today is simply an item asking you to acknowledge that the HPB heard that petition, they recommended approval of the landmark application, but you are not taking final agency action on that today because the MPB has yet to hear that recommendation. MPB will do that on May 20th. So that's the, those are the items before you. We need a motion and hopefully approval, accepting the minutes, approving, approving with conditions or denying the recommendation of approval on the certificate of appropriateness, and then to acknowledge the recommendation of the HPB, but recognizing that the MPB has yet to act on that final action yet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lyneum, you asked for this item to be?
Yes, sir. I'd like to take just a moment to go over the reason why, and we'll probably end up the same place you are, Kyle, but I just think we've got to have a better understanding of what's happening. About three months ago, you know, we heard a presentation on the Citrus Bowl reconstruction project, and it became to me, apparent to me and to all of us, that we really cannot maintain Tinker Field as a viable baseball venue. When we voted on it, we took all of Outfield. That presentation prompted a considerable amount of community discussion, and some perhaps instructive and helpful, and some completely off-base and uninformed. My focus then, and still is, purely based on the facts, relatively, the reality of our vision for that area accomplishing our priority to improve the Citrus Bowl, which has significant economic benefit to this community. We'll reduce the size of the Tinker Field outfield, as I've just mentioned. So my goal, you say, what is my goal? It is to provide a reasonable alternative to Tinker Field, to keep a location in District 5 that can accommodate competitive baseball for teams like the Monarchs, I love the Monarchs, and other college, high school, and even any minor league games. And this can be done at McCracken Field. We've already had that discussion, and I think we need to talk about it a little more. I have also, now, I can tell you this champion making every effort to incorporate important and notable milestones about Tinker Field's existence as part of the McCracken Field renovation, so that we properly and respectfully reflect those activities of interest that occurred there. For over 10 years, I've worked with Dr. Winters, I think it's Dave Davis at Winter Park, in trying to do, keep baseball of some type in that area. It's important to me to have baseball, not a memorial. I have heard other good suggestions by council members during each of our discussions and members of the community on ways to capture and reflect past activity at Tinker Field. And I know Mayor Dyer has asked staff to compile those ideas and develop a proposal. Now to the point of Agenda C1. The HPB minutes, we are in the midst of a process that ultimately the decision rests with this council and this council alone. So rather than continue to have our community boards wrestle with a matter perhaps wondering about city council's intention, I believe it would be instructive to the community and MPB for us to give a clear position and direction today regarding Tinker Field. And that brings me to a couple decisions why we should discuss it. And that is, we recognize that the HPB, you know, recommended landmarking the Tinker Field complex, and that the next step is in the process for the municipal planning board to consider their recommendation at the May 20th, as Kyle has just said, meeting. I believe it's inappropriate to landmark the entire Tinker Field complex. This is why. It would be financially imprudent, irresponsible, to spend the large sum of money necessary to rehabilitate and preserve Tinker Field. I've worked on this 10 years. Especially since the renovation of the Citrus Bowl will prevent the field from being used as a regulation-sized baseball field. The city should, in my opinion, focus its limits and limited financial resources on improving neighboring McCracken Field, which can still be used for regulation baseball, including high school, amateur, and minor league baseball. We can still landmark and preserve the historic Tinker Field diamond and integrate it into the new Citrus Bowl experience, giving children and other visitors to the Citrus Bowl the chance to see and play on the historic diamond. We can even include appropriate historic displays to Tinker and maybe to Dr. King, even though if we look historically, if we tried to preserve everywhere Dr. King spoke, they wouldn't have even redone his church, which has been rebuilt. I now take this opportunity to move that council accept the HPB minutes, approve the recommended action of the HPB, Case 2014-00031, and acknowledge HPB recommendation for Tinker Field while instructing the municipal planning board to consider, they can consider this, recommending an Orlando landmark designation only for the diamond of the existing Tinker Field. That is my motion.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. Okay, let's, I had Commissioner Sheehan before you, Commissioner Stewart, and then Commissioner Stewart.
I really respect the process of historic preservation, as well as all of our volunteer boards. There's a reason we get input from our volunteer boards, is because we need, I think sometimes it's good to have more than one set of eyes on it. They also frankly save us a lot of time because they hear a lot of these nuances and things. And the fact that, you know, that they brought, that it was brought to them, and they took it up and made some decisions, I don't think that we should be second guessing them, especially since there's more of a process to go through with the municipal planning board. I mean, I was not happy when the plans to destroy Tinker were brought to us at the last minute, and I was the one that brought up possibly preserving the diamond and the historical aspects, just because I felt I was not negotiating from a position of strength and trying to save something that would have been of historic value. I'm glad that the process will slow down and we can have discussions about it, but I don't like the idea, especially since there's been many actions lately taken by staff that I'm concerned about to weaken historic preservation. Just because it doesn't make financial sense doesn't mean that we shouldn't save things, and I've got lots of historic neighborhoods where it costs a lot more money for these folks to take the actions to restore these historic homes and not put vinyl windows and all this garbage in. We want, we want, the thing is, people want to live in areas that are nice and historic, but then they, then people move in and want to destroy the very thing that they seem to like. And my concern is that this process needed to be slowed down and it needed to become a public process, and I do not support basically smacking our volunteer boards in the face and saying that they shouldn't be bringing things up of public concern. This was brought up as a concern by the public, and we should hear from the public when they have issues of concern. It's not like we're bothered that much by them. This was obviously very important to them. So I do not support, again, smacking our boards in the face and telling them that their input doesn't matter. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right, and frankly, I'm, I've always been a huge supporter of historic preservation. Unfortunately, I've got lots of, most of the historic districts in my district now, and I, there's lots of pressure on me singly to codify and to make sure our historic preservation is upheld, and I think we should. So I will not support the motion, and I am very concerned about the process of disenfranchising our citizen boards and their input.
I don't view that as smacking the board at all. I view it as a district commissioner who's been here for 16 years and has given a lot of thought to Tinker Field not being here at the opportunity when this recommendation will eventually come to city council, which is the final arbiter of the issue, having the opportunity to weigh in on it before she goes out of office. So I think we all respect what HPB does and what MPB does, and I don't see it out of bounds to have a discussion about it and to give Commissioner Lyneum an opportunity before she goes out of office to at least give her viewpoint on this. Commissioner Stewart?
Mayor, I apologize. I'm having some difficult time. I tend to agree with everything that Commissioner Lyneum has said, but I'm really having a problem with process and procedure. So Kyle, if I can get some quick questions, because I think we really ought to kind of break these two apart and move forward independently. All right. I read the minutes, and the minutes come to us for approval, and we are choosing, according to these minutes, not to approve the item concerning Tinker Field, because the wording of the minutes don't change. So the idea is the minutes, oh, they're improperly written. So the idea is that the minute says, that the motion is approve the landmark, doesn't say approve the landmark and refer to MPB, it just says approve the landmark. So I understand the delicate nature to an acceptance and approval, but that's, if this were to say that this board now moves that this be forwarded on to MPB, we could accept that action, but that's not what this says. This says that this board approves that this becomes something permanent. So I have a hard time saying it's okay to take item one and approve it, but not okay, not okay to take item two and not approve it when those two wordings are absolutely identical on this sheet of paper.
Mayor, if I may. Commissioner, the minutes reflect that the HPB recommended to you approving the landmark, and what Commissioner Lyneum has proposed here would not change that. In fact, you only accept the meeting minutes. You don't actually approve the meeting minutes, and under parliamentary procedure, only the board that created those minutes can change those minutes. So you're taking the minutes as an informational item, acknowledging what they have done. So that's why you accept the minutes as opposed to approve the minutes. What you're approving, and if you go to the council agenda item, it'll say there that you're accepting the meeting minutes, approving the recommendation of approval for the first item, for the certificate of appropriateness, and acknowledging what HPB has recommended to you, but you're not yet approving or disapproving of that because the process under our code requires it to go to MPB first. The motion that Commissioner Lyneum has made is perfectly consistent with that, adding one caveat, which is her recommendation, based on this being in her district, that the MPB at least consider landmarking only the diamond as opposed to the entire complex. So her motion is in order and consistent with the?
I don't think her motion's out of order. I think the minutes are out of order, because the, well, the assumption would be that case number one would be approved and referred to the city council for approval, and the second would be referred, the minute should reflect, because both of them say that the motions are approved. So we, we've chosen, that's for me, I'm not available. We've chosen that the second, there's nothing inherent written in here that says the process and procedure is to move and send to the MPB. You understand my point? It just has the action, it has the motion. I'm okay with whatever it said, but I don't think this is reflective of what the action is unless we inherently take the charter of the HPB, in which case, in this delicate nature, that ought to have been, that ought to have been listed here as what their, that their role and authority is. You understand what I mean?
I understand. I think the person that wrote the minutes is trying to reflect just what occurs there, what is said there at the actual meeting. That person, Mayor, may not know exactly the way the process was laid out in the code, and perhaps that's something that staff ought to be.
But let me ask you this question. Is it, is it your understanding that the HPB has the authority on its own charter to recommend action to MPB?
Yes, sir. And in this case, and I think this is probably the only case in which an HPB action item would go to the MPB first.
And that's, that's okay. That, I think that's a subtle difference that's happening here, because you have two motions, one's approved, the other one's approved with an eight-one vote, and one's approved unanimously, and we're all retired deciding something different. We've not said why in these minutes. So when you go back and reflect it, you've just said that So when you go back and reflect it, you've just said that we're going to accept item two and approve item one, but we aren't saying why, we're just accepting item two. The reason we're accepting it is because they have their own authority to move something directly to MPB.
Right.
That's not reflected in the minutes. So if you'll, if you, I guess probably as a motion to accept the minutes, I would recommend a motion that we amend these minutes to reflect what the authority of the HPB is and that they have the authority to actually do this, and therefore we're accepting their action, confirming their own authority.
I don't think we can amend the minutes of a different body. We can only accept them or approve them.
Yeah. The minutes belong to the board that, the minutes, the minutes belong to the HPB. And so we can't, or you can't, nobody can, other than the HPB, change those minutes. We also generally discourage boards from changing their minutes after the fact because the purpose of my minutes is they reflect what actually occurred on that particular date and time. It is the norm with minutes from our land use planning boards that they don't have the procedure within the, within the minutes. So in most cases, of minutes will go straight from a board directly to you. This is an unusual case in which there's an interceding board that is still there. So that's why it's a little unusual and maybe confusing to folks. But I agree with man and mayor. I don't think we can change, you can't change, the HPB's minutes. The HPB could, though we discourage that generally.
I think Commissioner Stewart, you have to read it within the context of our code.
Code, you do.
I guess maybe that's the question, is maybe there's an additional explanation of code.
This is the way, of course, their minutes, like ours, is the way they keep track of what they've done and contemporaneously explain and provide information. So the information they're providing to you in this context, within your question, is two things. One is, they don't say it just like this, but knowing the code and knowing the purpose and reason behind it, what they're saying is, hey, we're going to take the HPZ issue to the next level. And Commissioner Lyman is saying, as you do that, I want you to consider this piece that we've talked about. And for the specific action, they're giving you the information that they've done that, and it would be our recommendation that you expressly approve it. The action, not the, not the minutes. Does that distinction help maybe? It's a little confusing.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page. And my concern is when somebody goes back and reflects and reads our minutes ten years from now, what they're going to say is, there's two items.
I guarantee you nobody will. I get the gist of it.
The only people that ever do is staff, by the way.
Well, I just, I mean, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. The second part, I think, is you end up with people that are going to look at this and go, wait, wait, you approved this. And now all of a sudden, there's another discussion of the subtlety of, did we approve the action? Did we not approve the action? Do we accept the action? I guess maybe I'm asking, and I don't, our volunteer boards do so much, and I do not want to hinder them, but maybe the wording in the future can be a little bit more careful that we have approved this and referred it to MPB for, you know, for their determination or something along that lines. Because that's the case, and we could approve it because we're allowing them to do what we've chartered them to do.
Well, I think the record now here is clear enough that that's, as we approve it, our understanding is that it is approved subject to going on to MPB based on this discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in agreement. I just, my concern is reading, just reflecting just this right here.
Let me see if I can tell you where I think we are. Okay, so HB, HPB acted upon this. Commissioner Lyman is recommending that we accept those minutes. Those, then the next action would occur at MPB, and what she is simply suggesting is that in addition to considering landmarking the entire complex, which would include the grandstands and the diamond and whatever's left of the field, or the outfield, I guess, to ask that the MPB not be directed to come to this result, but to also give consideration to simply landmarking the diamond, which has been discussed here as well. So not dictating the outcome, which the outcome will ultimately be decided by council after input from HPB and MPB, but to put another option on the table. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, let me, let me also, and maybe, gosh, I'm sorry, I'm going to get ourselves in a procedural problem, but, but what would be the harm? The reason why I want to separate this is, what would be the harm of us accepting the action of the HPB at the next, at our next meeting? In other words, what would be the harm of having this process here as a hearing become more public and having the opportunity for people to come here and share their thoughts about Tinker Field without having a two-hour notice to accomplish the same task? So my, and looking at these, and maybe I'm wrong, but all I'm trying to say is that there's been a lot of discussion, and I can tell you that the facts are, you don't play baseball on that field, you've moved that plate fourteen feet, so the original infield that was spoke, that does not exist anymore, it's been moved fourteen feet. Why don't you move it twelve more feet, somebody has said recently, to be able to play additional baseball there? There seems to be a level of fact that needs to come out in terms of some discussion. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that fact coming out in a two-hour notice of moving something from one to the other. So my thought is, if we would like to have kind of a discussion among people who want to come to city council and share it, that we separate this issue, that we, number one, approve the actions of number, of the first part, and the second is that we delay a decision on accepting that at the next meeting so that Commissioner Lyman can still be here and still reflect personally her concerns or her issues, which I tend to agree with candidly, but with her issues while she still is on council. And since there is no decision about whether that's going to slow or speed up HPB, they continue with their process because they have their own action, unless our acceptance is a requirement to go to MPB. That's rattling on, I apologize. That may be the world's longest sentence and the world's longest question. So I'm, I'm asking from a legal standpoint, is there any reason why we can't separate these two, leave the second part independent and be able to have a little more open discussion time among us about what we feel we ought to do about Tinker Field at the next meeting?
I was hoping you were asking your colleagues all that.
I think I could speak to that. The next city council meeting, I believe, is before the MPB meeting.
Just before, just before, yes, sir.
So we would be in the same posture that we are in today without having the MPB having weighed in on this, and I would rather not have testimony on, there's going to come a time when we have a public hearing of some sort or testimony from the public. And I think it would be more appropriate to have that after the MPB has acted so that we're actually going to take final agency action on the recommendations of both the HPB and the MPB and make a final decision versus having public testimony between the HPB and the MPB in between. So I think all we're really doing is accepting this and then seeing if there is some straw poll, in essence, of the council on whether there's some of us that think it's a good idea to designate the infield as a mark, historic mark versus the entire complex.
I'm, all I'm trying to do is, and I understand, and I don't disagree, I'm just trying to figure out how do we have facts that we continue to get barraged with by a core of people? Have those facts be removed from the discussion and what ends the discussion is, is the, is the history of that location? The answer is, I get barraged regularly of, let's go make it a baseball field. Well, there, that's a fact that we can actually address and say, look, history and fact are separate things. You can't play baseball there, but that doesn't mean you're not, you can't do something from a historical perspective. That's what I think the role of the MPB is. And I'm okay having, have that discussion at later time.
The other thing that I'm probably going to do, Commissioner, and it's unfortunate that Commissioner Lyman is going to end her distinguished career before we finally resolve this, but staff has been very diligently working on several different plans on how we recognize the history and events that have occurred at Tinker Field, and are coming up with some different design concepts that we want to have an opportunity to present. And I don't think we probably ought to act upon whatever we're going to do in historic nature related to Tinker Field without having also vetted the other ideas on how we would preserve the memories, if we do it at McCracken, if we do it with the area that's in front of the box office, or there are several different ways, or drawing the outline of the infield, as you suggested, those type of things. And it's a little premature, I think, to finalize the discussion without having all of those concepts in front of us as well.
May I make a suggestion, then?
Always.
If, if, I think you've developed a consensus, or at least potentially, and I'm going to direct this to Commissioner Lyman. So you have three actions at issue. You have acceptance of the minutes, approval of the one specific action that nobody has a problem with, and the third is to acknowledge the HPB status and process and to add, Commissioner Lyman's motion is to add to that direction to HPB. And I think what y'all are saying is, let's have that discussion with more information and more time available at the next council meeting, which would still inform HPB, I mean MPB, because their meeting would not yet have occurred. I think there's a strong interest by staff in the, for what it's worth category, to provide MPB some guidance and help and assistance. This isn't easy for them either because it's not the thing they typically do. So if that's what you want to accomplish, I think in procedural language, what Commissioner Stewart is asking Commissioner Lyman to do is accept his suggestion as a friendly amendment to your motion, which would accept the minutes, approve the specific action, and defer discussion of your proposed acknowledgement and direction to MPB to the next meeting. Is, I think I've got that right, at least in terms of what you said. I'm just trying to get it in a procedural framework so that it's okay.
I just don't understand, are we trying to delay a hearing? Because municipal planning board will have that hearing. Then when it comes back to city council, there will still be an opportunity to have that hearing. So I don't understand the delay.
What Commissioner Stewart is saying is, he wants to have a more expansive discussion of that direction to MPB next meeting. Is that right?
Well, I'm, I think that, if, well, if this means is to discuss the procedure of where we're going, that's fine. This means to discuss what each of us feel about Tinker Field and what direction we ought to give somebody. That's a little bit different discussion. I'm a little uncomfortable doing that and not having public notice with a two-hour notice to accomplish that task. So that's, so I'm happy saying, hey, look, bring your, let's have kind of a workshop and let's bring your guys, everybody come in, tell us what you think, and we can kind of move a direction. I'm happy doing that. I just don't know...
Mayor, if I may, let me make a suggestion here. The code requires the MPB to be the next stop. The MPB meets 8:00 AM. We get lots of public testimony at MPB, and it's the perfect time for staff to have that discussion and to invite folks to have that discussion.
I think we've got all caught up here. All Commissioner Lyman was suggesting was when MPB considers what HPB is sending to them, also as a second consideration, just look at designating the diamond instead of the whole thing.
Right, but she did make it in the form of a motion that was seconded.
She did make it in the form of a motion that was seconded.
Just to consider. But I think my very motion was taken out of content there and context because I heard Commissioner Sheehan make a comment, which was, I didn't quite understand, I was actually accepting the minutes. And she said, we were, we were something to a board, a volunteer board. And we do this every month. There was nothing unusual about saying, we accept those minutes. And just as it moves to the next process, the only thing I said was, just, municipal planning board, will you consider looking at this as you have your deliberations? There was nothing unusual, there was nothing heroic, there was nothing except to say, consider it. And we have plenty of time for public input, but if we want to continue discussing that, we can be here all night, and I don't, I don't have anything...
But I don't see a need to have public input at a city council meeting just prior to having public input at the MPB meeting.
That's right. Where you're going to really...
So the motion on the floor is that council accept the HPB minutes, approve the recommended action for HPB case 2014-0031, and acknowledge the HPB recommendation for Tinker Field while instructing the MPB to consider recommending an Orlando landmark designation only for the diamond of the existing Tinker Field. That's the motion.
Consider, it's their decision.
Okay.
And that was the motion by Commissioner Lyman and the second by Commissioner Stewart.
Yes, seconded by Commissioner Stewart. And I thought he was making a friendly amendment. I think he's just talking about...
I was trying to. Are you talking out of it? Thanks a lot.
And I think probably the purpose was just to gauge where some of the commissioners are in regard to the issue. Commissioner Eng, I can, let me think, he's for preserving the grandstands, right?
Hey, I'm, I'm for preserving the minutes here from the Historic Preservation Board and not to add anything to that, because I think the board has really done its job. And what we need to do is let the process do its job as well. And don't want to get into the frame of mind of just trying to interject something to the municipal planning board to get them to go a certain direction. And I'd like for the process to really take its place. And so...
I am so going to copy this down so that the Historic Preservation Board is going the other direction, and you are making the other side of this argument. I can preserve that, Commissioner Eng, but...
Okay, and that's, and that's fine too, Mayor, because I think the Historic Preservation Board really took this on, not as a challenge, but really as a fiduciary responsibility. And I think the board itself, because you had the chair of the board not to agree with the entire board. And so it was a seven-one vote. And I think the board really got it right, you know, as it looked, looked at the historic preservation pieces. And what we're trying to do is carve out, but I think what we need to do is allow staff and these boards to do their jobs. But I think what we really should do is accept the meeting minutes and approving or acknowledging the recommendations of the Historic Preservation Board as it was listed for April 2nd, 2014.
But Mayor, I'm...
Let me get to Commissioner Ortiz real quick. Commissioner Ortiz?
Somebody didn't read my...
Amen. Let's move on. There was just a simple agnotic, man. It's become such a chaotic thing. Mayor, go ahead, and let's move on with this. I have nothing else to say. Commissioner Lyman?
I'm sorry. I don't know what Commissioner Eng was talking about. I don't know what Commissioner Sheehan was talking about. I gave full respect to the Historic Preservation Board. We accepted their minutes like we do all the time. I did not disrespect anyone or ignore. I simply ask that the municipal planning board consider something. That is always a public hearing. Now, I served on that board a long time, and it has its own processes, whether we agree with them, and I have seen this council not always agree with municipal planning board or any other board. But now, it's not about changing the minutes. We didn't say anything about that or change what they were doing. That is just ludicrous to even imply that.
Okay. Commissioner Gray, do you want to weigh in?
No, Mayor, I was going to suggest, would you please call the motion, please?
Yes, I will. All in favor of Commissioner Lyman's motion indicates, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So it passes five to, and to be clear on what it does, it accepts the HPB minutes and just as a recommendation suggests to the MPB, when they take up this matter for testimony, also take into consideration whether it be appropriate to designate the infield as a historic or with a historic designation. Okay? All right. Hopefully, we have like twenty general appearance requests. How many do we have? One, shoot. Okay, this concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today, and...